I will get started. One, two, three, four. Okay. I'll do two. I would like to call to order the July 16, 2019 meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Stephen Manns.
Present.
Todd McLeod.
Here.
Peter Pivko. Let the record reflect that Peter Pivko is not present. Deborah Ring.
Here.
Andres Perandello. Let the record reflect that Andres Perandello is not present. Mark Payton.
Here.
Christopher Chase.
Here.
Scott Holtz. Let the record reflect Scott Holtz is not present.
Thank you. Next order of business is approval of the June 18, 2019 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them?
Yes.
Any comments or corrections?
Uh-uh.
If not, may I have a motion for approval?
I move for approval of the minutes of June 18.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, and opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is a report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Chairman and board members Angela Van, the planner and zoning administrator. So, brief update. July 1, City Commission meeting, we had one case that was heard and it was approved by a vote of five to zero. It was Kaiser University. If you remember, there was approved for a 208-unit dormitory as shown in the yellow square and some other changes they did to their master plan. And this bases a picture of how the dormitories are going to look on campus. And that concludes the presentation, only cases that have been heard by the commission since the last meeting.
As I recall, didn't we have a suggestion about the restrictions to them on having multiple events at the same time? It was a suggestion I think we passed on. It wasn't anything binding. Do you know if that was ever taken up?
I'll let Mr. Snyder answer that question, so it's his case.
Good evening. For the record, Eric Snyder, principal planner. Yes, we looked at the parking studies that they had provided and the recent parking lots that they had passed and got that are being constructed or now, actually, they have been CO'd. So, the condition was modified slightly to allow them to have multiple events. However, in the effort of keeping public safety, they are not allowed, they have to have people there. If they're going to have multiple events, they have to keep them from parking on the main access roads through campus so that the traffic can flow through and they cannot park and overflow into the Village Commons Shopping Center behind them or Military Trail, which would be kind of difficult. But, so they have to have people that are monitoring that. So, if they're having them park on the soccer fields or the baseball fields, they can do that as an overflow, but they just can't block the traffic. So, that was the, and I don't know the exact language in front of me, but that was generally the gist of the comment. So, that as long as the movement was safe, they could do that or the safe, public safety was.
All right. Thank you for the update. Any other questions of staff? And if not, we then move to remarks of the chairperson, of which I have none. That brings us to the declaration of ex parte communications. Does anyone have anything to disclose? We now move into the public hearing portion of our meeting on the square end of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up, raise your right hand? Mr. Seymour, this is you too. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are continued cases, of which there are none, and we will then proceed to case number, planning board case number 1223I.
Is there a way to make a full screen jump?
See, I'm moving along. Four minutes, I'm halfway through my agenda. Let's keep it moving. Keep up that pace. I'm trying to speak faster. I'm okay, man. I'm too slow, isn't you?
You'd say four pages.
Yeah, it's helping you out.
What happened?
I'm speeding.
Give a second.
Yeah, see, I don't know how to do it either.
All that momentum, man, it should come to a crash.
Hey, Angela.
It's not displaying right. Oh, he got it. Apparently, it just needed to feel like she was coming up.
Okay.
Good evening. For the record, Brian Seymour Gunster. On behalf of the applicant with me tonight, Mr. Malar and Mike Schwartz from Kimbley Horn and Pat Burns and Patrick Chapman from JFK North Medical Center. So, I'm going to try to breeze through this because I know you have a very well-done staff report and want to thank Eric for the work he's put to get us here. Right now, what we have is CSPD for JFK North. It was approved years ago, and I'm not going to spend time going through all the history. It's currently fully developed with a hospital campus, with JFK North emergency room, which has recently been approved for an expansion, and so behavioral health. And then, there are two medical office buildings in the campus, one of which is within the CSPD boundary. What you can see here in red is the current boundary of the CSPD, and then in yellow is the piece that we're going to be adding to the CSPD or requesting to be added to the CSPD. Ultimately, this is why we're mending the CSPD, and there's two requests. This is the first, is to allow the subdivision of this medical office building at the south. It's been leased for a long time. There's an option in the lease which has been exercised. Cliff Hertz, who's here, represents the buyer in that. And in order to allow for the subdivision in a way that doesn't interfere with keeping the campus as a campus as it's been for decades, we're going to incorporate that into the CSPD. And then, we're going to go ahead and include some development regulations that are, the staff report identified, as well as in the justification statement, that will allow for the develop, the subdivision, allow for things like setbacks to be dealt with, internal landscaping, parking. There's an existing parking and access agreement with the leaseholder. That remains in place so that there will be constant access to the roadways over the internal access ways and then parking over the parking areas between them so that the parking can be met. The justification statement outlines each of the criteria in the land development code and your zoning and land development regulations, all of which are met in this particular case. Second, also in accordance with your land development regulations and within the CSPD, is a request to expand the behavioral health facility, which, as you can see here, is in the northern section of the property. It's going to add 8,776 square feet to the adult unit and 4,025 square feet to the children's unit. The areas you see in red here is where the expansion's actually going to take place. What that will do is allow them to enhance the facilities they have to treat more patients. Unfortunately, what we've seen with the opioid crisis and general society, there's been a lot of mental health issues and there's a need. And JFK North, in its previous names, as well as currently has long been a leader in our community in dealing with those issues and helping people to get back to being able to lead productive lives and take care of themselves. There are some tweaks that we're going to need to make on the technical side before we go to City Commission. Kimbley Horn's already been working with that. We'll get everything back to Chuck. We do have the traffic letter already issued and has been submitted to Eric, so the city has that. The other things will get done so we can keep this thing moving. We do agree with the conditions of approval and the regulations as set forth in the staff report. We have other slides that go through the landscape plans in detail, the site plan in detail. If you have questions about that, we're happy to answer them. If you want a more full presentation, I'm sure we could do that as well. But, at the end of the day, what we're asking is that you recommend approval for the expansion of the boundaries, the updated development regulations, and the addition of the behavioral health facilities as set forth in the application and the staff report. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Let me start down here. Any questions of the applicant? Any questions on this side? I'll let the record also reflect that Mr. Perandello was able to join us shortly after we began. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, good evening. Eric Snyder, principal planner, for the record. So, I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm not going to go through unless you guys really want me to. But, the key is, as Mr. Seymour has said, this is to the request for six.
Excuse me, Mr. Snyder, do you mind speaking a little more directly in the microphone?
Oh, sure. As Mr. Seymour said, this request was to expand the CSPD by approximately 1.88 acres to add about approximately 12,800 square feet of the behavioral health facilities and the related site improvements and update the development regulations for the future subdivision. Staff has reviewed it. You can see it in the staff report, the backup information. We did find that the request meets the eight amendment standards outlined in Section 9432 of the zoning and land development regulations. There are some conditions on pages two and three of the planning board report, and as Mr. Seymour said, we did get the traffic letter, so condition 1A has been addressed. So, the one thing I do want to point out is that you are not approving the subdivision as part of this application. It is just the framework for when the applicant does come in and goes to the subdivision process. That will be a separate process. They will be coming to the, turning an application to the planning division. I can go over any of the other items or conditions if you'd like me to. If you need more information, I can. I have some presentation, some slides. But, if you want to ask me questions, you can. Otherwise, the staff recommends approval of the requests as outlined in the.
All right. Any questions of staff?
Eric, so this seems to be, there's a lot of confusion about the trees. Is everyone okay with the landscape plan? This is a very landscape-driven issue. The conditions are, the applicant and the city are fine with?
Correct.
The resolution of how we're going to manage the trees.
Correct. And that's one of the things that you note, that they are in agreement with providing some additional stuff. I mean, they've done some stuff. We identified some areas that weren't on the plans that you have in front of you, the package you got.
Right.
That did need a little enhancement.
Right.
Or filling in. So, they have agreed to do that. I don't have the plans in my hand. We wanted to wait until we got through the meeting before we had them run everything and in case there were any changes that were presented here, so.
So, everyone's on board. No one's fighting about the trees.
That is correct.
Eric, you're also seeking approval of the waivers in.
Yes, there are waivers in the report that are both for the, to recognize some conditions, some of the existing conditions that are on-site that are not changing. There also are waivers that are requested to do the, to generate the development regulations that you find in your report in attachment. Three, that in order to do those waivers or in order to do the development regulations, some waivers had to be done, and that's what, the waivers are done, and then the development regulations are based on the approval of those waivers. So, correct.
All right. Any other questions, Mark? Okay. Andrea, any questions?
No questions.
Any questions on this side? All right, thank you. Would anyone for the public wish to be heard on this application? If not, we're bringing it back to the planning board. Any discussion? Does anyone have an issue with his application? If not, look for a motion for approval.
I have a question. Do we approve the waivers separately?
Yeah, that's going to be my question.
What's the, what's the appropriate protocol? Approve the waivers in the, the main request.
Each waiver separately?
Yes. Todd, you fill out for it?
I guess so.
Todd, Todd's going to do this. Unless there's no objection to any of the waivers, you could. Is there any objection to any of the waivers? We can streamline this process. Anyone have any concerns about any?
All waivers and conditions with the approval.
Why don't you make that motion, sir?
I move to approve planning board case number 12231 with all waivers and conditions as provided in the staff report.
That's, that's 1223I.
1223I.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, and opposed. It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We now move to code revision cases, and we have one on the agenda, 1905.
Good evening. Elizabeth Levesque, urban design planner, for the record. This is case CRC 1905 for DMP miscellaneous ZLDR amendments. This is a city-initiated request for a text amendment to Chapter 94, Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations. Section 94109, definitions and minimum requirements. Section 94111, parking and loading requirements. And Section 94132, transfer of development rights program to introduce additional regulations and clarify several provisions of the DMP code. So, recently, staff of the Downtown Master Plan, Anna and myself, brought forward to you a couple revisions, I believe last month or the month before. We brought two rezoning cleanups for plan developments. Anna also presented on some Scrivener's errors. So, this is just a continuation of us going through and doing some cleanup and clarification of items that come up, have come up recently or come up a lot, and we really just want to further clarify for better understanding for the public and for developers. So, within the DMP article, there is a section that contains definitions that's related to elements of downtown regulation. Within this is also some minimum requirements related to these definitions. So, there are a couple amendments to this section that I will be going over, the first of which is the definition for active use ground floor. The intent of active use is to provide ground-level interaction with pedestrians in the downtown area. This amendment will clarify that these uses will need to provide direct access to the public from a sidewalk or public open space. The amendment will also clarify that residential amenities that are not intended to attract pedestrian activity, gyms and yoga rooms and movie rooms, cannot be located on the ground floor unless they are open to the general pub, public. So, this is an example. This is the Alexander Residential Building where the gym was located on the ground floor. And as you can see, they ended up covering the windows, which is not permitted. You're not, there's a transparency requirement, but what they found was when they put a gym on a ground floor, their tenants want privacy. So, it's really not a great use for that active use definition. The next definition is for fence. This is clarifying fence height for sports fields can be eight feet. Also clarifying the location for chain link fence within the DMP to allow chain link only along street frontages in residential districts, not allowing along street frontages in the urban core and special districts. Where they are allowed on the street frontages in residential districts, they are going to be required to have hedge screening. They will be permitted alongside and rear setbacks in the other planning areas in the DMP. And all chain link fence will require a top rail. So, this is an example. This is in Providence Park area, and you can see on the left, the chain link fence with no hedge, and you can see a fence with a hedge, and you can just see a big difference in aesthetics and walking by and the feel of it. And this is an example of a chain link fence without a top rail. So, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. The next definition is for setback. The amendment will clarify various measurements, including the measurement for Providence Park Professional Office, and this will be measured from the lot line, not back of curb, which is typically back of curb for DMP, except for residential districts. And PPDPO is similar to residential districts. So, this is just clarifying it's also from the lot line. Clarifying when a curb line varies along a property, for example, if there's some areas with parallel parking and some areas with no parallel parking. How to measure if it's an undulating curb, and this will be from the midpoint of the lot frontage. The next, same section. This is Table 4-4, facade articulation requirements. In this table, there was previously no reference to blank walls, which blank walls is defined in the definitions section, and it just says that blank walls are not permitted and you have to include fenestration or planar breaks. So, we just included that reference to that definition in this table. Table 4-6, open space types by sub-district. This amendment will include open space types for OBD. Recently, we've had a proposal come in for DeTura Street in Clematis Waterfront District Five, and we've discovered that in Clematis Water District Five and Clematis Waterfront District 10, the only public open space that was permitted was passageway. And we found for this example and discovered that it really wouldn't work in this site and it wouldn't work for other sites, and it was required. So, what we're including here is that it is required, and the cases that it's not, if it's deemed inappropriate, subject to planning and zoning administrator discretion, these other types indicated with P1 can be permitted, based off what's appropriate for that location. Table 4-7, open space standards. Currently, only one side of active use is required for public open space. Staff is suggesting that two sides of active use be required for open space. To show an example, the Whitney, only one side is active use, and granted, it is along Quadro Boulevard, which the location may not have been the best location for that open space, but staff has also found that with only that one side, where the other sides are street or parking lot, it doesn't really invite people to be in that area, whereas the Broadstone City Center, which has multiple sides of active use, really feels more inviting and more interactive with pedestrians. The next section, 94111, for parking and loading requirements for Port Cotechay Passenger Loading and Drop Off Area. The amendment will clarify that the drop-off area needs to be set back 16 feet from the back of curb and will permit both types A and B pictured here for Class A office and hotel uses where they're permitted. So, before, it only allowed, I believe, type A for Class A office. I might, I might have them backwards, but staff felt that both of these types could be for both of these, only when they're permitted, though. And requiring additional landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the actual drop-off area. Same section, 94111 for bicycle racks. Currently, a ratio of bike racks is based off the required minimum parking. Staff is proposing that this is based off of provided parking. And also to require for hotel uses, which was previously, previously exempt. For curb cuts, parking entrances and driveways, staff is proposing to establish a distance between curb cuts of 10 feet, which matches outside the downtown area, and also establish curb cuts and drop-off standards for OBD. And lastly, Section 94132, transfer development rights program. This is to clarify the use of the TDR program for projects seeking additional height but not seeking additional FAR. So, the amendment will state that the additional square footage needed for that additional height needs to be fully obtained by purchasing TDRs or obtaining TDRs. So, to provide a graphic for that. A site that's 100,000 square feet, the base development rights, for an example, permit .5 FAR, which permits a building of 50,000 square feet. Developer comes in and they are in a receiving site and with the incentive development rights on the same site, the FAR permitted is now 1.0, and they are allowed to go to 10 stories. Developer wants to build this building shape outlined here in red, but they're not asking for additional FAR, only the additional height. What this amendment would do is that all of that square footage needed for that additional height needs to be purchased or obtained, and that wasn't clarified previously. So, lastly, staff reviewed the amendments based on the amendment standards of Section 9432 of the DMP and found that all the amendments do comply with the standards, specifically the amendments enhance the quality of the public realm, which supports Goal One of the DMP element of the comprehensive plan. And staff found that proposed amendments do not modify the intent of the existing language as originally approved. And with that, staff is recommending approval of CRC 1905 as included in Attachment Two of the staff report, and approval is based on the findings that the petition meets all eight of the required amendment standards found in Section 9432 of the ZLDRs. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Let's try this side.
Just to help me understand better this process, you're, you're asking us to approve these clarifications, and, and then if we say yes, is that it? Or do we end up going to, or do you end up going to some other city body for further approval?
City Commission is next.
Okay, so it's one step and then the other step?
Yes.
Okay. And then, is part of the, like, what you're thinking when you, when you put these proposals together for our review, that they're, they're clarifications rather than being rig, big policy changes? Is there, is this a matter of degree that makes you think, oh, these are small things, so we're just going to, we're going to just do it this way, rather than making a big change, which would be subject to a different process?
Correct. Yeah, that's why we grouped them together. A lot of them are just minor, minor amendments, either clarifications or things that the original intent was for them to be in there, and it was just something that might have been missed or, you know, put in the wrong section, and it's just something that we're now bringing forward to clean up in the.
So, there were two examples that I noticed. So, one was the gym. We had the gym on the first floor.
Mm-hmm.
And so, what you're, so your, your view is that if, if it had been worded more clearly, that the, the intent was that, you know, people shouldn't have to look into a gym when they go walking down the sidewalk and, but, but the, the language was just not really clear, and so you think with these changes you're proposing, it's clarifying what was the intent of the original statute or the original rule?
Yeah. Right now, so the, the active use definition is just if it's occupiable space, which is pretty general. So, but the, the intent of that active use on the ground floor is so that when you're walking by, you know, you feel like it's a, you know, we hope for coffee shops or lobbies where people are sitting or just, you know, it's that type of downtown feel. And although it wasn't specifically said what types of uses could and could not count, I mean, you know, like mechanical rooms and those types of things don't count because they're not occupiable. Yeah, we, we felt that the, the way that it was written was not properly, you know, accomplishing the goal of that active use, and so we wanted to.
But, from the point of view of the business owner, he's saying, well, there's no rule that says I can't have a gym on the first floor with a window, right?
Currently, right. Correct.
But, to be, to be clear, to follow up on his question, the objection is not the gym on the first floor. The objection was the gym closed off, like, Ultima Gym, when that was open.
No, it's, it's the, it's the gym use.
You could look into a gym while you're walking down the street.
But, maybe, I just want to clarify my own understanding. I thought you had said that the goal was not to have it walled off like it is in this example you have here, and that you said most gyms will want their privacy, and that's why you wanted to eliminate gyms. Did I misunderstand that?
So, so if you mentioned Ultima Gym, like, that's open to the public, so that's, that's fine. If it's a private gym just for the residential building, we would rather not have them on the ground floor. I mean, unless they're, you know, interior to the, the building, and maybe we can clarify that, you know, it's just if it's on the frontage.
I just want to be clear, but your question, I agree with the concerns you raise, is if they had not, if you could have seen through, would that have eliminated the problem? Is the problem the gym or is the problem the fact that, that it's sealed off from view? I'm not clear what you're, what the evil is that you're trying to address with this correction.
It's both. Because even when they aren't covering the windows, and I see how that came across, even when they don't cover the windows, I mean, gyms are maybe activated by one or two people, maybe, you know, one person per hour. It's, it's not much activity going on, and it doesn't really feel like welcoming or, you know, it doesn't, it's not much interaction. And so, and then the next step was that, you know, the, even though the, the developers for the Alexander felt like, oh, this is a great, you know, we can use this for active use, they eventually found out, which I'm sure came from the tenants complaining, hey, we don't want to work out with people seeing us, then they covered it. So, it's kind of like a two-step approach. And the same with yoga rooms.
Chris, I interrupted you. Finish your questions.
I don't know if that, does that clarify that, yes, this one?
Yeah, when you answered the first round of questions, I understood what you were talking about.
Okay.
And then, I have one more thing to ask, which is, what would be the alternative? If this, is, is there another way of creating regulations that doesn't go down this path? This is like the easy path, and then there's the hard path for, for more important issues?
If it's a larger issue, it would be a code amendment that would come on its own and would be, you know.
It would be subject to a sort of a, a different kind of process that's, that's, that's got a lot more substance to it or there's a lot more involved?
Not necessarily. It's the same process, but it would be separated out. It wouldn't be, we wouldn't group them all in together like this.
Thank you for clarifying that. It did help me understand what's going on.
Okay.
Rick Green, Assistant City Administrator. It's the same process. It's a code amendment. Some code amendments are obviously a lot more controversial, like when we do something like the Okeechobee Business District. This is more of a housekeeping issue, just to clarify, but it's the same process. But it's the same process. It would be a planning board recommendation of a code change that would ultimately go to the City Commission for two readings.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that I was thinking about when you went through them was, I think most of these changes tended to, in very small ways, to make things a little bit more difficult for the, for the owner of the, of the building. Would you say that's true, that just each one of them was just making, you know, it's a little tougher now? It's going to be a little tougher for the guy to, to, to build an apartment building because now he's got one more rule that he's got to observe. It's a little tougher for the person building the park because now he's got another rule to observe. Does that, am I understanding it correctly?
I wouldn't say tougher. I think that a lot of these things, we've been getting anyways. We've been working with developers to do anyways. And now it's just for the, the ones that maybe do, that aren't necessarily giving as much to that public realm, which is really important in the downtown, we just have a little more to be like, well, you know. And, and it just, it comes from examples and, and experience. Especially with Anna, working here for so long, you know, she's just seen really what, what helps and what doesn't in, in the downtown. So I, it's not our intent to, to make it more difficult. A lot of them are minor. And, and you know, it's not a, it's some, some situations require, you know, case-by-case basis, where we'll work with people as well. If it's, you know, if, if they come in and they really have absolutely no choice to put the gym on the first floor, or there's some specific reason...
They would get a waiver from you, right?
They could get a waiver. Correct. Yeah. But they would have to justify that.
And let me add also that this board, unfortunately, they don't get to see the projects that come into downtown, but they're regulated by our Downtown Master Plan, which is Chapter 4 of our Zoning and Land Development Regulation. So the difference between that and what you typically see with a plan development, whether it's residential or commercial, is that it is a form-based code. So very prescriptive in terms of height, FAR, recess, planer breaks, activities on the ground floor. So what this is really doing is trying to simplify and clarify some of the issues that after years of, of bringing in downtown projects, we have noted needed some update and correction.
Good. Thank you for taking me through that. I appreciate the extra effort.
Any other questions of staff? All right. Thank you so much. I'd offer anyone for the public to be heard, but I don't believe that's an issue here. So we'll bring them back to the board. Any concerns on any of the issues that were raised?
Yeah, so Steve, the active use requirement is extremely noble. The problem here, and I kind of echo the comments of the, is that we're going to be granting waivers all the time if they tighten up the use of that ground floor space to exclude gyms, yoga rooms, et cetera, that are for the development of that, that project. So what's going to happen? And look, the reality of, is that other than a couple streets of the real foot traffic in downtown, there is no economic model for new development to underwrite those ground floor spaces. They, a, apartment developer will underwrite those ground floor spaces as nothing effectively. The retail rents are not relevant. The coffee shops, the active uses, all the things we want to see there to make the market, that's extremely noble, and we all want that. That makes complete sense from a planning perspective. It usually makes no sense from an economic perspective. So taking away the right for that developer to put a gym or a yoga room or something that's not public-facing or public access, I would rather have something, even if it's behind, even if it's behind partially frosted glass, than a vacant space for 10 years. Because what we found in City Palms, in the Whitney, in any number of these non-core apartment developments, it took 10 years for that retail to develop into something occupiable and a true active use in the way that we all want to see it activated. And it ends up being a Botox place and a weed shop and a vape shop and maybe a convenience store. That's great. But I'd rather have half-frosted glass in a high-quality residential development than vacancy for 10 years, which we could generate if we push too hard on the use requirement. The active requirement makes sense. But getting granular with the uses and telling the developer, no, 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 put your gym upstairs, put your yoga room upstairs, it's not going to work. That's not active enough. That's too much for my taste. And this is coming from someone who is a true urbanist and understands the need for this to look better than just dots in a window. But this is a high-quality residential development in the quarter of our downtown. And I'd rather see this than a shell space with a dirt floor, which is what you're going to get, because the developers are just going to kind of give it, give you the finger and say, fine, then we'll underwrite it as nothing, and we'll leave it vacant for 10 years. Make our money off the apartments. That's the reality of it. So that's my concern.
If I may, something that maybe we could, we could look at is we have different street hierarchies in the downtown. And so we have... Right. Right. So we have secondary, primary, pedestrian, and avenue. And perhaps we can, we can take a look, Anna and I, at, you know, maybe, maybe it's appropriate on, on certain hierarchies of street and maybe not appropriate on, on others. I do see your point. Mm-hmm.
It does. It does make sense. And, you know, we, one of the reasons, I think, for example, to your point, if you recall, it came before us after years of efforts to try to put restaurants or retail on the ground floor, we allowed office space. Because going to your example, it was years and years, and it just didn't make economic sense. I think that's your concern here. We love what you're trying to do, though. And so the question is, how do we best balance that? I think Mr. Green wishes to be heard.
Certainly, I understand the concern, and that's something we wrestled with. What, what Mr. Pateman is suggesting, what Liz is talking about, in our Downtown Master Plan, we have identified primary, secondary, and tertiary streets. Primary streets obviously being streets like Clematis, Okeechobee, Quadril. And then the requirements for development on those streets are greater than the non-primary or the secondary and tertiary, particularly with regard to active uses. So, so maybe following his lead, what we can suggest is that maybe a provision like this only applies to a primary if you want to go that route, or you simply say, we allow it anywhere. We don't care if it's primary, secondary.
We're back to waivers every time.
Right.
So it's probably less intrusive to do it the way you initially described than the latter, limit it to the primary streets or primary and secondary, rather than the entire DMP?
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Yep.
There's less waiver work. It seems more thoughtful that way.
Right. So my suggestion would be, if, if the board chooses, the recommendation that could be made to the City Commission is we utilize that same language, but maybe include some verbiage that I'm sure Mr. Pateman can come up with that says that only applies to primary streets.
Would that make sense to you, Mark?
Yep.
Okay. What are your thoughts, the rest of you? Like, it kind of addresses what you were saying too about not making it harder for, for people.
Yeah, I mean, what I've been thinking about while we've had this conversation, that must, that's really important, is, is the perfect is the enemy of the good, right? And so you, you wait for something to be perfect, and meanwhile, people aren't building buildings and the city...
And we're getting experience. Because I remember I was on the original deck when, when the idea came to keep that ground level all resident, I mean, to keep it business and retail. It made a lot of sense. 10 years later, whatever, we realized it just wasn't, wasn't working out. So you have to learn from experience too, to your point.
So maybe permitting on avenues, just like Quadril, some of the larger streets. What were you thinking? I mean, we, we could reword to...
I have to see a map of what the primary and secondary streets are again. I mean, I know that, that map exists. I know it. My suggestion would be that we wouldn't hold the developer's feet to the fire on non-primary streets. And we want something rather than nothing to, to look into, even if it's some frosting and some, if it is slightly artificial. We get that, because the market cycles here are much longer. And it takes us a lot longer to fill in ground floor retail in an economically viable way until we get the boots on the ground. So we don't want to discourage the residential development by forcing their hand in what happens on the ground floor of their developments, because we want those boots on the ground.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't have that, that map with me, but I can, I can follow up with you.
Would you accept that, why don't we, when we make the motion, include that as part of the motion? Was there anything else other than, because you both identified, I think, the same thing? Was there any other changes or concerns that were raised? So I think, if I'm understanding, we're comfortable with everything but that one.
I do have a question. So frosted glass is not permitted to screen?
Won't be.
Will not be permitted?
And did this change?
Actually, currently, is the transparency requ, it's not permitted.
It's not permitted.
It's not permitted. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't clarify that when you were explaining that. So, correct. So, you know, this would be something that we would have them remove.
Right. So I'm just curious, are, like, retractable phantom screens or stuff like that not permitted either?
We can't regulate curtains and blinds.
Just curious.
You wish we could? Any other discussion? We'll wait till Mark returns before we make a motion. All right, any other questions of staff? Sam, are we able to handle this in a single motion?
Does the section we're discussing have a number? In words, if it does, it could be a motion to approve the modification to Section X?
Right, and then everything else? Okay.
Yeah, it's Section 94-109. And it's just, there's no sub-number. It's just a definition for active use ground floor.
Do you have a suggestion for a precise motion? Because I think our intent is clear. We'd like to approve this. We like the Mark suggested change that, that, that particular subsection apply only to primary streets. Is that right? Oh, he's coming back.
We should wait for him.
So we're, we're looking for the motion, Mark.
Mr. Chair, I, I would suggest, and I'll defer to the legal counsel, if you move approval of code revision case 19-05 with a modification to the recommendation on Section 94-109 to whatever the board sees fit.
Are you comfortable with that? Do you make the motion? Appreciate it.
And it sounds, I'm sorry, it sounds like you're not sure yet without seeing the map which streets...
I think we're talking primary for now.
Right. So I move to approve code revision case number 19-05 with the amendment to Section 94-109 such that the limitation on active use is limited to primary streets only.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those with a favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. I think at this point, we then move to other business? Well, there's more to do, my friend? Is there something more we need to do?
Well, that was a, that was a motion for 94-109.
Right.
What about 94-111?
We're all subsumed into 190-05.
Oh, okay. Okay.
No, that's good. Good. We've done that before where we've messed up.
There were no other modifications to the other sections.
So are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. I come back then. Thank you. We've done that before. We've adjourned and had to come back because we made that mistake. So other business, unfinished business, new business, anything else, gentlemen, ladies? We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.